Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission's study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. First item on the agenda is to discuss the illegal camping ordinance.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the Police Department is before their governing body this evening to propose and have you consider adopting a new ordinance that will help the Police Department in our strategy of dealing with homelessness in our community. Over the course of the last several months, probably about six months or so, we've seen an uptick in what we'll call homeless encampments, which is small groups of homeless people, generally in public places, public right-of-ways or a park, staying there for periods, long periods of time. We've had some pretty specific examples over the last few months. We had a pretty sizable one under the bridge at Broadway and Cherokee Street on the South Side. We had another one under the bridge at Fourth Street in Santa Fe, which is sort of down by Donut Palace, the bank right there. And then I think everybody's probably aware of the circumstances we had at the Doerty Park here, maybe a week or 10 days ago. So we've seen a slight uptick. This is not new. We've had this circumstance, it just seems, over the course of the last few months that there's a little bit more activity relative to this. Oftentimes when we come across an encampment, we find a mix of some small personal property that belonged to the folks, tents, sleeping bags, coolers, lots of trash, cardboard boxes, those kinds of things. Occasionally, we'll find some more serious stuff, drug paraphernalia, needles, some stolen property that we've been looking for. We do have some tools in the current ordinance that we do use to help us sort of deal with these circumstances, such as examples of disorderly conduct, criminal trespass, littering, established park hours, those kinds of things, consumption of alcohol in the park. And then, you know, there's some more, obviously, the more serious things if there's a particular drug violation happening, or a warrant for their arrest or something like that. We will use those kinds of tools that currently exist to help us sort of combat that. But before I delve into the specific ordinance that I'm proposing, I do want to talk a little bit about our strategy overall and how we deal with homelessness, you know, from a law enforcement perspective. And I always start these conversations with everybody by saying that it is not illegal to be homeless. It is not illegal to be in a public place. You can be at the library, you can be at the park, you can be at public places. And so those present some challenges for us when members of our community call and want us to do something about that. We can't just take action because of a concern. We have to have a legal framework and a basis to take action. And so part of the proposal tonight is to sort of close a gap that we feel like we've identified. But strategically, what we'll try and do when we get a call is make an assessment of what we have. Where are we? Is it public property? Is it private property? What violations are taking place? Then we try and make an assessment of what's the best way to remedy that problem. Is education a better way to do it? Is it a person that we haven't encountered before that may be new? Is it someone that we deal with chronically as a problem? We'll make our best assessment there. If education is the best assessment by the officer, they'll do that, issue a warning, hey, you can't do this, you can't be at this location, here are the problems you're creating. But if it's a more chronic person that we deal with consistently, we'll probably be a little bit more aggressive in our enforcement action, issue a citation, maybe make an arrest, those kinds of things. So that's sort of how we deal with it from an approach. We get encampments is one that we get. Occasionally, we'll get a complaint from maybe a person who owns a business in the Central Business District about a person that's homeless in and around the store or in and around the business that's making people uncomfortable. We'll get that. You might have seen, maybe in the last month or two, a circumstance in which there was an allegation of people stealing flowers out of the flower boxes of the front of several businesses downtown. So we responded, we tracked that down, we, you know, were able to identify that person and seek prosecution for those kinds of things. And so strategically, that's how we do that. We work very well with the shelter that's up at Third and Kiowa. I had many conversations when Sister Vicky was in charge of the facility about specific problems they were having inside the facility, issues that were happening sort of around the facility. We had a lot of conversations about particular people, how to maybe best help them. There's a new person, Miranda, her and I have had a lot of conversations, most recently, several conversations most recently, particularly about the circumstances that took place at the park. They have made some changes to some internal policies that they've done at the facility up there that is a little bit more helpful in terms of how they are dealing with it. For example, we get the occasional rumor that comes through town that other places are dropping off homeless people by the busloads and this sort of thing, and other law enforcement agencies are bringing them here because we have a homeless shelter and that sort of thing. Most of that is exaggerated, most of that is not entirely accurate in the way that it's taking place. For example, oftentimes when the police are involved in something, we might make an arrest for some unrelated event, but then as they go to jail and they get out of jail, they're, you know, classified as homeless and they don't really have a good way to return back to their community of origin, say, for example, Topeka or Wichita or Kansas City. And so Miranda and her staff up there have adopted a different strategy that's been very helpful. When we have that circumstance, what they are doing is bus fare to get them back home. They're focusing all of their services at the shelter as best they can on folks who are from Leavenworth County and not from just anybody who that might show up. If a person shows up at the facility and they discover that they're not from our community originally, they give them about 24 hours and then they help them find their way back home through bus tickets or plane tickets, and that's been very helpful to that. They have also been sort of very cognizant of circumstances where the allegations are people are coming from outside of the county into the county to get services. For example, one particular issue she discovered was with KU Med Center and their emergency room. They were somehow or another able to create a program in which if they had a person that was there, they'd give them the initial medical treatment, they would give them a voucher to take a cab from KU all the way to Leavenworth. When she discovered that, she filed a complaint with their staff to suggest that that was not an appropriate remedy for dealing with the homeless. Mr. Kramer and I talked about that. He authorized us to join that complaint. That is not an acceptable remedy to just send someone off somewhere else because there might be services available to there. And so she is waiting on a result of that investigation. They promised an investigation. It's been a little while. I think she probably is planning on doing that to sort of re-up that, and then we will, if the opportunity presents itself, we'll join that complaint. But to the best of my knowledge, there's no strategy in which other law enforcement agencies by policy are bringing people, you know, by the tons here to Leavenworth. They're just not doing that. I'm not telling you it's never happened where a trooper at the south end of the county arrested somebody and brought them here. You know, that's perfectly reasonable approach to some, you know, measure of resolving a particular issue, but that's not a policy that takes place. And so we fight a little bit against that. But we also go up to the facility a lot and help them. They have behavior problems in the facility, and so we spend some time with them helping them. We have a very good relationship, it's very collaborative. Anything that I feel like I would need from them to help solve a problem, they would do that and vice versa. So it's been working fairly well. Those new internal changes have been beneficial to us, and so we're doing that. So we have been, again, homelessness is not new. We've just had a circumstance arise in the last few months that has, as we've assessed it, created a gap. And so what we're proposing, what I'm proposing and ask for your consideration tonight, is an illegal camping ordinance. When we have these kinds of issues, we often look to other communities and their solutions that they're trying. And so this ordinance is modeled after Lawrence, Kansas, and Topeka. They have similar ones in which they are dealing with very similar circumstances, and so they've found some success in that. It's important for you to hear me say that we are not going to arrest our way out of homelessness as a broad issue. It is an enormous, complex issue. Law enforcement does have a role in that, which we're glad to play, but the purpose of this is not to create some panacea where we think this is going to solve everything. It is more of an enhancement of our toolbag to make us better at response and have a little bit better legal framework for taking action when we find that it's necessary. So let's talk a little bit about the ordinance. Essentially, what it would be called is illegal camping. So anytime you have an ordinance, you have to define what you're talking about, and so I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll tell you that the way we would define camping would be, shall mean the use of land to conduct one or more specified activities, which I'll talk about below, when based upon such use, it reasonably appears, considering all the circumstances, that the participants in conducting the specified activities are using the area as a living accommodation, regardless of the intent of the participant or the nature of any other activities in which they may be engaging. Camping shall not include residing in a permanent structure that may be lawfully occupied as a permanent or temporary residence, obviously, at a house or something like that. The specified activities is helpful because you have to say specifically what they're doing and identify that. Include one or more of the following: sleeping or preparing to sleep, such as laying down bedding, storing personal belongings, including but not limited to clothing, sleeping bags, bedrolls, blankets, sheets, luggage, backpacks, kitchen utensils, cookware, and similar materials, making any fire for the purposes of warmth or cooking, excluding cooking on a designated city grill as part of the shelter reservation program, or erecting a tent, lean-to, or other similar temporary structures. So for those of you that might have seen the photographs that were on social media of the park, that's exactly the circumstances that were taking place up there. And so I think, my sense is, that the general community would agree that that's not the purpose of the park shelter, for someone to do that and stay there for a period of several days. That's not the intent of it. Some of the other elements, it shall be illegal to engage in camping on private property without the consent of the property owner. Someone couldn't just show up in someone's backyard and pitch a tent and start staying there. It should be illegal to camp within 10 feet of a doorway, loading dock, stairway, or fire escape. This is going to be helpful to our Central Business District. Occasionally, we'll get a complaint about maybe a homeless person sleeping in the doorway or something like that in the alley, and so this is going to be helpful to us in dealing with that. It shall be illegal to engage in camping on a public right-of-way or public property located within the city of Leavenworth. So this is specific to under the bridges or on the trail or someplace that's the public right-of-way. Some exclusions for obvious reasons, there's a campground, that would be excluded, obviously, we want people to do that, and so that would be excluded from there. Camping on any public property for a special event. So we did have some concern about a blanket rule that didn't allow us for some leeway. For example, my recollection is, in the last five or six years, we've had Lewis and Clark Group come through and they wanted to do like a special camping event overnight at the park. We feel like that would be appropriate as long as they had special approval. The Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts might have an event, something like that. We've had, there was one more circumstance if I can recall, the Buffalo Soldiers. If you recall, they came into town doing a special event, and the guy established like a campground that would remedy back in the 1800s. And so we did want to create at least some leeway for the city to give a group or a person a special event circumstance in which they could say to the city manager, we want to do this thing, it's for one night, here's why, and then we could make a decision collectively about whether that would be appropriate. But as a general rule, you wouldn't be allowed to do that. And so that's the essence of the ordinance. We outlined some violations, which we took that straight from the Lawrence one, so if you're uncomfortable with that, that's something you could change or establish. For example, the fine could be up to $500. And then jail not to exceed 30 days or both, certainly change that or make that different if you wanted to. You could add some element that we didn't think of, but I'll be glad to talk about the general issue of homelessness if you like, or some other elements of the ordinance as we move forward.
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, I wanted to bring this up.
Okay.
Immediately. I mean, I think it's a critical issue. I don't know how you would fine a homeless person $500.
Right.
I was curious about that, but before I get into that, just to say, I'm the Director of United Way of Leavenworth County, and whether it's perceived or there are people being bussed in from out of town, I know that I've been getting calls, several calls in the last few weeks, from people asking me if we would help them pay their first month's rent if they came here.
Right.
And things like that. And so I know that, you know, and so I say absolutely no, and there are no other agencies in Leavenworth County that would do that.
Right.
They take, we take care of our own. This is a Leavenworth County agency, we take care of Leavenworth County citizens.
Right.
So that needs to be stressed to whoever is calling in.
Right.
But to say, one thing we don't want to do is, we don't want to be the friendliest, we don't want to be the friendliest county or city in the neighborhood.
Right.
So we do need to do something right away. Anyway, that's just a couple of comments I had. So if you want to address that $500 sentence, or $500 sentence to jail, that's, how do you, how do you charge a person $500 that doesn't have a home?
Usually, usually what happens is that one city will create an ordinance and the people that are suffering similar circumstances just simply copy that. That's what we did here. This is just a model or a sample, you could change that. The idea is not to jail and find someone that's homeless and probably struggling financially anyway. You have to have some measure in there. We could make that, whatever it is that you wanted to make it collectively, you could just tell me, that's just a sample and a starting point.
Okay. Well, I just think we ought to make it uncomfortable for people to come here.
Right.
And then take care of the ones that we have. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, I believe that we need to be fair but firm. We do have an issue in town, I think it has gotten worse. Maybe it's exacerbated during the summer. Obviously, there's been, you've done some clean out at Doerty Park, and I think underneath the Santa Fe Bridge. And I read the ordinance, and I'm wondering why we can't just say, the only place that you can camp with approved camping is Riverfront Park? Because I think then someone can sharpshoot this and say, but it isn't covered here. That's the only place without special permission.
Special use permit.
Without, rather than, you know, make it even simpler. There's no exceptions, Riverfront Park, approved campgrounds, no other place is it legal to camp unless you get the special exception as said here. Does it have to be, do you have to have points one, two, and three?
My view would be that the intent, we have to first agree on the intent. If that's the intent of you and the rest of the governing body, we could write that, I think, but I would defer that to our city attorney.
Okay.
So in this case, we took the model from Lawrence and Topeka, and we gave it to Catalina Thompson, who does prosecutions for us in municipal court. And I said, this is sort of the overarching theme, we don't want it to take place without some exceptions, and this is, so she sort of did that. Yes, I think, so if the idea is to scale it down and make it simpler, I would defer to her for that, I think so. But usually, you have, the idea behind, and the intent behind the law is to make it very specific, here, you can't do this, and here's what we mean by this, and so that is some of this. We're saying you can't camp, and this is what camping means specifically, and so that's probably some of this. But I would just offer that the intent of what you want is here. Whether we scale it down a little bit or not, I defer to Ms. Thompson about that, but I think the intent is clear.
I just want to make sure no one sharpshoots it and says, ah, you know, there's an exception here that you didn't cover, therefore, the camp.
Right.
Because our intent is, the only place to camp is Riverfront Park. We have no other campgrounds in this town.
And that's with permission.
And we don't want to open any unless you have that special request
That's with a reservation.
from the scouts or something like that.
Right.
Or with friends.
So at the end of this, I'll make a note of that, when I talk about that to her, you know, are you comfortable that that's what we're doing here? Whether it exactly says that out loud or what, the intent, we'll make sure the intent is clear. My other response to that would be Lawrence, Tope, Lawrence has theirs, has had theirs for a while now, and they seem to have been surviving legal challenges, which is always a fair, fair point. Topeka, I'm not sure how long they've had theirs, and so it's been around for a little bit, survived some legal challenges, I'm sure, and so, but we'll make absolutely certain that that's the agreed, that everybody agrees to, that that's the intent of the ordinance.
Well, and I applaud your efforts and Catalina's efforts. This issue has gotten bigger, and as I said at the beginning, we have to be fair, but we must be firm.
Chief Kitchen.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was reading here, so with the cleanup and everything that the Police Department has done, I mean, it has affected the budget. How, I mean, how much, been a crucial amount?
I think that the budget impact has been more toward the Parks and Recreation Department.
Right.
We have ceased taking reservations from the shelter. It takes an employee all day now to clean the shelters, go around and clean the shelters, and so that's been the real burden, along with law enforcement, of course, is the Parks and Recreation Department.
Right. Okay.
Chief, did you converse with any elected or appointed officials from Lawrence in terms of how they, how they have thought about the effectiveness of what they've done with their camping ordinance or?
No, not yet. My viewpoint is, we feel like there's an issue. We grabbed a couple of samples, Topeka and Lawrence. The overall issue of homelessness is affecting everybody all across the United States. It seems to be getting worse. So from the broadest perspective, I could tell you that all community, most communities across the country are dealing with it, some way worse in the southern part of the United States where it's warmer in California and Washington. So we, there's a lot of information sort of globally about that. But I sort of wanted to provide some proposals tonight. Here's what we, what we, here's what we've been doing, here's where we have a gap, this is an option for a solution to that, and then I'd be glad to do that and talk to them to see how effective it is.
I would imagine it's been somewhat effective. I just was wondering, you know, what, what they would say. I know it's all, that's all subjective and everything, but.
Right.
How long have they had it for, like, a couple of years, two or three years, do you think, or?
Probably, Lawrence has probably had it for three or four years. There's, there's a lot of media attention about Kansas City, where they were putting homeless folks in hotels, and especially during the COVID circumstances last year. You know, and then Lawrence was, Lawrence seems to be, have had what we are having now, which is the problem in the parks specifically. And so that's what they have, they've had it for a while, and success is probably specific to an individual circumstance. You know, again, I don't think the Lawrence Police Department or any police department wants to try and arrest their way out of this problem, but we have to have some firm guidelines on getting us to resolve a particular problem, which is what we had. Again, we used what we had, I felt like we were comfortable in doing that because of a couple of things, one of which was one person had an arrest warrant, one person had a violation, they were drinking while the officers were talking to them. I mean, so we have that, and those are easy solutions. You know, but, but in advance of that, it's, when we get to that point where we're sort of cleaning out the park, which is what everybody sees, all the police and all that, it's usually about a three-day process, because I will typically send somebody out to visit with them first and say, hey, you guys can't be here, there's always a lot of stuff, whose stuff is this? Typically, what we'll get is something like, well, these few things are mine, I don't know what all this other stuff is. And so we'll give them several days if they, that they know that we're coming and we're going to clean up the place, do whatever personal property that belongs to them. Occasionally, we've made arrangements to get their personal property before, when we were at the park before, we had an acquaintance come and get the person's personal property and take it. That is a challenge that we have, is dealing with personal property. We don't have the ability to just seize it and hold it and keep it forever, and so we'll give them the opportunity to get their personal stuff, and then the rest of it is almost always trash, and it's a lot of it.
I have a question about, and I have no idea whether, I've seen a couple of gentlemen out at the intersection of Limit and Hughes, I think, and I don't know if they're homeless, you know, they're trying to get money from the people who are passing by in their cars. What, what are our limitations as far, is that, I guess that's legal, as long as they don't go on the street, or what?
So we changed the ordinance three years ago, maybe two years ago now, to prohibit specifically that. There were church groups that would show up and roam out into the street, and so we changed that order. How long has that been, about, right, two or three years ago? Two years ago?
Okay.
Yeah, you cannot do that. We occasionally get that complaint.
Right.
And we'll occasionally go on, hustle the guy off. There's, it's a couple of guys that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I've heard some constituents on that, that's why I asked the question.
Well, I want to be clear, the answer is no, it's not legal to do that, is the answer to the question.
Even if they're just sitting, they just sit there at the sign, and somebody throws them some money, that's, that's illegal.
Yeah, it's the solicitation from traffic, I think, is the right way to describe it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So we, I think we went out there two or three weeks ago, maybe.
Yeah, well, it has its pros. I mean, so, okay, thank you.
Well, and it's, from what Sister Vicky said, it's been shown that 75% or more of homeless have either drug problems or alcohol problems or mental health problems. So hopefully, with our improvements in mental health here, and that, that'll, that'll help somewhat, but in the meantime, I think we need to be at least, at least as strong as what our neighbors are.
True.
I agree. And further, what the mayor said, as you, your preface, that mental health does play into this, and I know Commissioner Griswold, Commissioner Cause, who's in the audience, they're on the Countywide Mental Health Advisory Board, if that's a proper name. And I'm hoping that that, I know that you've done your studies, and I'm hoping that gets funded, that could possibly help, and also call out to our state representatives too, that this is an Leavenworth problem, this is a statewide problem, a nationwide problem, but at the state level, we need some mental health funding possibly, or some help at all levels to try to alleviate this problem.
Absolutely.
It can't be swept under the rug.
They need to take responsibility too, as well.
Okay. So I think that if I hear correctly, there's consensus to move forward.
Yes.
The big issue, though, is to.
I think so.
If you simplify it, it's just very black and white. Here's where you can camp, here with a reservation, no other place.
I will defer that to our city attorney, Ms. Thompson, she will.
Yeah, I think, I think it's written really well, too.
To see if we can scale that down a little bit.
Okay. And she can, I understand.
Right, and that we're clear that there's, there's one exception for a special event by the city manager to authorize the Boy Scouts or something like that, to do an overnight event, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, we will, we will move forward on that and be back maybe two weeks or four weeks, something like that, to get that done. We'll try for two weeks.
That'd be good.
It seemed to be the urgent.
I think the sooner the better.
Sooner the better, we'll try to do that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Kitchen.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, presentation of the proposed 2022 operating budget and the 22 to 26 capital improvements program.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I am pleased tonight to be able to present to you the city manager's proposed 2022 operating budget and 2022 to 2026 capital improvements program overview. As a reminder for anybody watching tonight, or commissioners who have only been through this maybe once or twice, the city manager previews the budget at a study session, and then normally that same week, on a Friday, we go into budget meetings. This week, it's the 16th. So the next step in the budget would be July 16th in this room from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM as we go department by department through the budget. Tonight, I will provide an overview of the key points of that budget. So here's the budget overview. The 2022 operating budget is balanced as required by law and builds on the city's goal to provide high-quality services while maintaining sound financial standing. COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent recovery have continued to create budget challenges affecting the city of Leavenworth as well as our residents and businesses. In responses to the challenges to Leavenworth families and workers, and based on direction from the City Commission, the proposed 2022 budget includes the following measures. A total city mil levy reduction of .66 mils, so 2/3 of a mil is the overall city reduction. A 1/4 or .25 mil levy decrease to city-supported services. And I'll make the clarification that the reason that the total city mil levy is larger than the mil levy for city-supported services is I'd like to acknowledge the efforts by the Leavenworth Library, Public Library, and the efforts that they made to keep their pass-through levy low, which helped us to get to that 2/3 of a mil decrease overall in the city-levered budget.
Okay.
City manager's budget also proposes a freeze of refuse rates for 2022 and a freeze of sewer rates for 2022. Those efforts to try to help families and businesses who have been affected by the pandemic. Infrastructure and amenities continue to drive the formulation of the annual budget. And 2022 includes the following, and I will get into more as we go through this presentation, more than $3 million in city funds dedicated to roadway improvements, a new splash park, which will add a second outdoor water feature in the city, and funding for a new restroom, park restroom facility, and a trails project, which I'll also get into. When creating the budget, the budget team, which is the Finance Director Ruby Moline, the Deputy Finance Director Roberta Byer, and our Assistant City Manager Taylor Tetter and I, here are some of the overall considerations that we took into account. The city faces wage and labor pressure in nearly all areas, police, fire, refuse collectors, streets, park laborers, and in specialty positions in information technology and in finance. At a meeting today, I spoke with Armed Forces Insurance, I spoke with Stuttered Moving and Storage, I spoke with Fort Leavenworth, and it is a community-wide, a regional, and a national problem finding labor, and so we are dealing with that as well. Funding, the second budget consideration, funding and implementing a public transit program over the next three years, the city has committed to $62,000 over the next three years approximately to fund a new transit plan program, which we've talked about a number of times, and will be at a. number of times and will be at a, a, an upcoming study session to go over the update on, on when that will start. Ensuring that federal stimulus dollars continue to be available for community service agencies and businesses. I wanted to provide an update on that briefly. To date, the city has given out 32 individual awards to community service groups totaling $576,000 and 50 individual awards to Leavenworth businesses totaling $188,750. And told to date, the city has made $864,750 in direct payments to business and community support partners. We have an additional 100,000 in process for four, for five additional community service organizations directly related to rent, utilities and food. The next item is using federal tax stabilization funds to ensure that the conservative budgeting and spending practices directed by the commission to maintain a strong financial positions are protected. I'll talk to, about this a little bit when we get to our reserve position. But those efforts have helped the city do well in our bond issuances and as we navigate through all of the audits and budget awards and such. Also investing in employee health and welfare and retirement expenses, most of which are mandatory through capers and KPNF. Next on the budget development considerations, we were lucky enough to adopt and complete Leavenworth 2030 First City Future Forward. The city commission and maybe more importantly, the public invested a lot of time in the creation of this document. So staff had the ability to start the implementation with this year's budget, the 2022 budget. So among the items that you will see that came from the plan are community amenities, including trails. We haven't had a dedicated trail allocation in some years. There are $30,000 in 2022 dedicated to trails projects and we continue to grow those going forward. Focus on downtown and corridor improvements. We will talk about that a little bit with reconstruction of Fourth Street and some other projects and funding that the city 2022 budget proposes. To explore the historic district boundaries, we talked about relooking, hiring a specialty consultant in the area to review the historic boundaries of historic districts in the downtown. That is included in the budget. And supporting new local events and marketing efforts, also taken into account when formulating the budget. Next is to maintain information technology infrastructure, including storage requirements, updated licensing and cybersecurity. We've had a number of commissioners take an interest in the city's cybersecurity to protect the information that we have. Updated licensing is a continual issue. I'll give you one example. The fire department has been using a program called Firehouse and we were notified that Firehouse will no longer be serviced. That is common. However, when that happens, not only do you have to buy the new software, which is an upfront capital cost, but then usually the ongoing costs are increased because it is a far superior project. So those are things that are out of our control that we have to budget for. Storage requirements directly relates to our ability to have every officer with a body camera and in dash cameras. And the city continually battles the increase and the requirements to store that video and back it up on the cloud in a safe and secure manner. The next item is compliance with federal regulations related to American Recovery Plan Act or ARPA funding. The CARES Act dollars had pretty clear and somewhat simple regulations that the city was able to comply with and continuing to use. ARPA is a different ballgame. Our finance director has been on webinars recently. It is much more complex what you have to do as far as justifying, tracking and recording your ARPA expenditures. So as we went through the budget, that was in the back of our mind. How to account for potential positive economic news that occurs after the adoption of the budget. We, we have budgeted conservatively this year and next year, but as revenues materialize, how are we able to use those revenues to supplement some projects? So that could take the form of moving 2023 or 2024 projects up if we're seeing revenue coming in. So we've given ourselves that flexibility to identify those opportunities. Include this slide every year. This is the value of your city of Leavenworth tax dollars. So with the proposed mil rate, again, decrease of two thirds mil, 0.25 city supported mils, you're 5109 a month on a house of $200,000 that goes to the city. The city receives $51.09. Goes for police protection, fire protection, and I'll elaborate on those. Each police protection and fire protection has a background of regulations that they must, must follow. We must fund the fire department to a level that ensures our ISO or insurance rating remains what it is. So it's not just the protection, it's the background that supports those departments. Snow removal, street repair, the community center, animal control, code enforcement, parks and playgrounds, capital improvements and health and safety inspections, just among a few things that the city does. Moving to revenue highlights, the city did experience an increase in initial assessed valuation from roughly 229 million as of November 2020 to 243.7 million as of June 2021, which is an increase of 6.4%. The increase in assessed valuation causes a $163,195 increase in taxes. However, it's important to note that the city's realized growth of that is 4.9%. 25% of the valuation goes back to property owners and businesses in the forms of tax abatements. So whether that is a TIF abatement, a NRA, which is the Neighborhood Revitalization Act, 25% goes back to businesses and property owners. And that number fluctuates year to year. We did a running four year average from 2017 to 2021 and it was 52% that went back to business owners and property owners. And a lot of that is based on timing. I know that the commander's inn was an eyesore, but they paid property taxes. And when that gets torn down, then you could have a year where those property taxes go to essentially zero or very low. But then as you build again, it reflects a much larger increase, but that's really just because there's now a structure there. So that's a, a number of times it's a function of timing. From the $163,195 in property tax increase going to the city, the 2022 budget is allocated as follows. $81,984 is available for the general fund. That is police, fire, public works, administration. $65,506 is restricted for debt repayment. Those are the general obligation bonds that fund our street improvement program that we try to grow each year so that we can continue to improve more roads in the city of Leavenworth. $15,157 for recreational activities in the city of Leavenworth. And the balance, which is $548 is the remainder is restricted to police and fire pension. As a brief reminder, the city does have a few long since retired employees still on a city fire and pension from some years ago. Also in revenues, total sales tax revenues in the tax funds are budgeted and increased 4.14% from the 2021 budget and the increase is allocated as follows. $266,383 for general fund operations. And the balance for capital outlay, the uses set forward by the city commission, those include parks, roads, sidewalks, economic development and debt reduction. This slide shows where the general fund dollars go by function or by department. And I think it's important to note that 67% of general fund dollars go to public safety. Another 13% goes to public works. And then you can see smaller slices of the pie to some of the very small city departments, city manager's office, city clerk, community development, human resources, finance and IT. So that is, I think, just a, a nice overview of where the general fund dollars that the city collects go. Additionally, I think it's important to see where revenue comes from, what makes up the city's ability to run a government. The city of Leavenworth is a bit unique in the county in that 47% of our general fund is sales tax. We are funded, our general fund 21% by property taxes. That is less than half of what funds the general fund from our sales tax revenue. Franchise fees for those who occupy our rights of way and operate in the city of Leavenworth. And then of course licensing permits miscellaneous, these may be court fines or something like that, that make up a lot of those other items. So we are a sales tax dominated revenue economy. I mentioned earlier that I would speak about the reserve summary. The general fund 2022 budget includes a budgeted reserve of $5,023,000, which is available to support unanticipated expenses or underperforming revenues. The budgeted reserve represents 24.89% of the budget, which is above the city's reserve target of 16.67%. But I'll provide some context to that. The reserve includes the CARES Act dollars set aside for tax stabilization funding, which is recommended to remain in effect to offset future revenue shortfalls. A little bit of context to this, to this date, the city has experienced about $800,000 in revenue shortfall. That's a combination of liquor tax, highway tax, transient guest tax, revenue through our probation department, revenue through our recreation department, court revenue. So the purpose of the CARES Act, a lot of those local government dollars was to be able to draw on those as your revenues do not meet expenses to avoid passing those fees and charges onto the public to balance your budget. So that $5 million would not be $5 million without the CARES Act. That, those dollars continue to fund as highway tax and gas tax and liquor tax continue to come in below. And those are funds that fund our streets department and our recreation department and various city services. I think another good point on the general reserve is that our larger general reserve was key and was cited in 2022 review by Moody's Investor Services as a stable and healthy reserve to, was critical to maintaining the city's AA2 bond rating. So a number of cities saw their bond rating decrease as their reserve positions were lower due to pandemic requirements. The city maintained our healthy and strong bond rating in part because of our ability to have those reserves in place. Expense highlights. City staff has worked to bank transportation eligible funding in anticipation of the reconstruction of Fourth Street through the downtown. The primary source of non-state grant dollars will be the city's federal funds exchange allocation. Total about 1.4 million. We get between 400 and 450,000 a year from the federal government for transportation needs. We know that the reconstruction of Fourth Street from the state, they will give us 1 million. The project is closer to 2.5. And through the direction of the commission, we wanted to do more than two blocks through the downtown. We wanted to span the downtown and make a statement with a welcome to a historic downtown, improve pedestrian access and safety and utilities. So that project will be much larger than it was originally anticipated. And so the city will need to fund about approximately 1.4 million and we, and we plan to do that through federal funds exchange dollars. City contributions to police and fire KPNF state pension system and the capers state pension system saw an increase of $18,243 and that is just passed to us. We have no say in that. And health insurance costs are budgeted to increase 8%, which equates to about $56,000, although we don't usually know those final numbers until August or September. We always make the commitment to the commission that we budget 8% and if it comes in above that, we make plan design changes to get to 8%. We will not exceed 8%. We will simply change the benefit package that we offer our employees. The 2022 and 2023 portion of the five year phased implementation of the employee classification and compensation study. In 2018, the city did a five year plan to see that all of our employees were within the acceptable ranges for peer cities, for with peer employees. We are at the tail end. That implementation over five years is shaped like a bell curve. As you hit the majority in year two and three, you start having far fewer. We have 69 final adjustments over the last two years. 78% of those 69 employees are in police and fire. So the next one up is employee compensation. Each year I present my proposal for employee compensation is recommended that the 2022 employee compensation plan include a 2.75% across the board increase for employees implemented mid-year. The compensation plan is in line with those being provided by most municipalities in the region. And along with the increases I just mentioned, the budget includes the completion of the compensation and classification study, which was completed in 2018 with the goal to bring city employee compensation in line with peer cities. Implementation, implementation of phases four and five also increases the minimum starting pay in critical areas such as police and fire. We had to stair step the increases in the starting pay so that we didn't have what's called compaction, meaning those who've been here three, four, five years will bump up against the minimum. So as we moved our existing employees, we slowly, year by year, moved the starting pay. So we need to remain competitive in all of our positions. We don't need to pay more than everybody else, but we need to be competitive and able to deliver services to the community. The second part of the budget is the capital improvements program or the CIP. The overview of that is the non-pavement management portion of the CIP are funded solely from sales tax, which has been a difficult revenue source to forecast. 2022 CIP is largely obligated with some limited flexibility starting in 2023 and increasing in the final three years of the five year outlook. Some of the long-term obligations include Thornton Street. That project is done, but that was expensive and we'll be paying the debt on that for the next nine years. Animal control has a couple of years remaining. The city has invested heavily in our fire department with three new trucks a couple of years ago, and then of course our new 100 foot aerial platform truck and still the business and technology part. They all consume a large portion of available funds. Police vehicles, city hall maintenance, software costs and major infrastructure projects at the Riverfront Community Center are all dependent upon CIP funding. Also included in the CIP are funding for the city's portion of the public transit grant program, funding for the city's portion, portion of a resurvey of the downtown historic district, the inclusion of 600,000 of CIP sales tax to go along with the 1.4 million in bonds that we issue to maintain the 2022 road expenditures at $2 million. Additional storage for the police department's video footage, there's a little over $100,000. It's the next installment to ensure that we have adequate video storage. And budgeting for the replacement of fire department EMS equipment. The 2022 program also includes three police patrol vehicles, a detective vehicle and one animal control van. Ongoing debt allocations, as we've talked about, including the aerial trucks, animal control and such. The replacement of a crucial piece of infrastructure for the community center, which is the cooling tower, and then a roof replacement in 2023. The Havens Park restroom, parking light, parking lot and security lights. The construction of the new splash pad or splash park, as we've talked about, and an allocation to dedicate towards improving our trails network. It is a five year plan. I don't, I won't go through the other years. I just have a couple of notes that we've slated for 2023 and beyond. Restroom and shelter structures at Stubby Park and parking expansion at Stubby Park. Stubby Park has been a success beyond our expectations. And so the next step at Stubby Park would be a permanent restroom, shelter structures and more parking. Reconstruction of the Cody Park outdoor court area. We'll talk more about that on the 16th. We've come up with a large comprehensive plan, but then also a phased approach based on some, a large cost in that area. Concrete apron replacement at all the city fire stations. This is where the fire trucks enter and exit around the bay doors. It's crumbling at most of our fire stations. We need to replace all that concrete. Southside Park Playground Project. This goes back to a commission goal of focusing on lesser used city parks and bringing vibrancy to them. And then various infrastructure and capital equipment replacement projects. In conclusion, the recommended 2022 operating budget and 2022 to 2026 CIP reflect a cautious approach to the fluctuations in the local, state and federal economy. The recommended budget proposes to invest heavily in the city's infrastructure, to invest in employee development and workforce stabilization, while making modest enhancements in parks and recreation, community resources and city capabilities with a flat controlled, city-controlled utility rates, refuse and sewer, and a decrease in the mil levy. Additionally, careful consideration of expenses in the previous years has allowed the city to reach a stable reserve position. So before you, you see the total reduction on the far bottom right column of 0.664 mils. And then about halfway up on that right side, you see the reduction in city supported mils of one full quarter mil or 0.25 mils. Again, we'll go into budget meetings on the 16th to review this budget in more depth and we will have the draft budget online in the books to the commission on July 9th.
Okay. Sounds good. Good report.
Great job.
Any, any questions?
I just have a question on that last sentence. Additionally, careful consideration of expenses in the previous few years has allowed the city to reach a stable reserve position. I mean, in previous years, you've had a good, we've had a good stable reserve, haven't we? Or?
We have, and we've been able each year to build on that a little bit. And I'll get into this more on the 16th, but we've also been able to build our reserve position in wastewater. Black and Beach was here about a year ago telling us that we did not meet industry standards on our operating reserve or our capital reserve. And we've managed to meet industry standards on both items through direction of the commission. That was. That was through some staffing vacancies, non-mission critical that we were able to hold, through a little bit of deferred maintenance, but nothing mission critical, and over time we have reached those reserve positions also in wastewater. So just the ability to do that, not to do one-off projects with reserves, which the commission has been very good about. It's always tempting when you see a large number in the reserve to do one-off projects, but that really hampers your ability to maintain a stable reserve. So I think those actions by the commission have led us to maintaining our bond rating and our strong reserve position.
Absolutely.
How many more years do we have on the animal shelter?
2024, I believe. 2025 is our final.
That's for the general obligation bond that was...
We issued a specific bond for that one.
Okay, three years. Any other comments or questions?
No, I look forward to the details when we get a copy of the budget and go into the meetings a week from Friday.
Sounds good.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, that ends our business tonight, and we'll go around. Mr. Kramer, do you have anything?
No, the only thing I'll say is as we finish the youth sports week, games this week, we have a couple of games this week. I like to thank the parents, but also the staff of the Recreation Department. It's tough when you get so much rain. We've had a lot of rainouts, but they do a heck of a job, rescheduling and rescheduling and rescheduling, so it's been a great season. So thank the Recreation Department and then also the participants of the program for their patience as we dealt with a lot of rain.
Absolutely.
Because we had a pretty good turnout of the...
We did. We had well over 300 participants. It was, we set records in many of our ages and genders. It was a great season.
How did your team do?
Yeah. Oh, we had fun.
Did everyone get a trophy? Did everyone get a trophy?
I don't know. Hopefully, hopefully, we haven't finished the season yet.
I have one thing, and then I'll go around the table. Someone asked me to kind of share some information here and recognize some of our employees, the city employees. He didn't give me permission to use his name, so I won't. But anyway, this is his letter. "At approximately 2:20 p.m. Tuesday, June 22, 2021. At my residence, I lost my balance and fell over a four-foot retaining wall located just north of my house. I ended up on my back, seriously injuring my right arm. I could not get up nor move due to the injury and pain, even after several attempts. I laid there for nearly 10 minutes, not knowing what I was going to do. My wife and her mother were away from the house. There was no one outside in the neighborhood. I was alone, seriously injured, with very few options. Fortunately, Tuesday is trash day, and our area is at the end of the route. As the truck and workers passed by, I was able to get the attention of one of the men. He called 911, got the truck to stop, alerting his coworkers to my situation. They attended to me, providing water, controlled my bleeding, and made no attempt to move me. They stayed with me throughout the entire ordeal, eventually insisting the EMS staff at their direction, placing me on the gurney. I ended up at KU Medical Center Trauma Unit. I had a compound fracture of the upper right arm and severed an artery. The doctors reconnected my artery and repaired the bone after six hours of surgery. The attendant surgeon told my family that I could have lost my arm if there had been any additional treatment delays. Apparently, he could have lost his life because of his artery. In retrospect, I was fortunate that Charles Evans, Clay Seibert, and Austin McDaniel, sanitation crew members, came by, stopped, and attended to my injuries. Charles was the first person to recognize my difficulties and made the 911 call, then alerting his crewmates of the seriousness of my situation. They were attentive, supportive, and encouraging throughout the ordeal, keeping me alert and calm in what seemed like forever for EMS to arrive. I am happy to report in large part that I am home recovering with a favorable prognosis for the return of full use of my arm due to their efforts. City of Leavenworth employees such as Charles, Clay, and Austin provide essential services but are also willing and able to rise to deal effectively with unusual situations when encountered. They deserve recognition for their efforts from the city on my behalf. My family and I are eternally grateful to them."
Can we give them applause?
That is awesome. Love hearing those stories. Anyway, that's all I have. Commissioner Preisinger.
Just a reminder to everyone watching or anyone here, a primary election August 3rd, next Tuesday, a week from today is the last day to register if you're not registered, and early voting starts next Wednesday, the 14th. And this is an open primary, no party affiliation is necessary. Anyone that's registered to vote is eligible to vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Griswold.
I do not have anything, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhardt.
I do not either.
All right. If not, we are adjourned.